The session is called to order. Please rise for the invocation to be delivered by the Honorable Julian Jam Barunda.
Brothers and sisters, let us bow our hands, our head, and feel the presence of the Lord. Ever loving God, we once again offer to you our prayers and petitions as we gather today for an assembly. We thank you for the grace of calling us together this endeavor. May we continue to send us your Holy Spirit to enlighten us in our sohein towards our greater glory. Lord, in this trying time of COVID pandemic, we ask your guidance and protection so that all our thoughts and actions would reflect your holy will. As we interact with each other, grant us the grace to acknowledge you in each one of us. May everything we do begin with your inspiration and continue with your help. May your spirit guide us in our conversation and be our constant intercessor in all our decisions. We believe, Lord, that in you and for you, nothing is impossible. We submit ourselves to your mercy and divine help. In your precious name, Lord, we claim success. In your presence, Lord, we draw our strength. In your encompassing hands, we rest our petitions. We all this, we ask all this in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing for the singing of the national anthem. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we call the roll of the honorable members. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The Secretariat hereby directed to call the roll of members.
Roll call of members: Honorable Representatives Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abegsaldivar, Abunda, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agarao, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalion, Amante Matba, Amatong, Andaya, Angara, Aragonés, Arbizon, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Aumentado, Babasa, Bagatzing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Basco, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabuchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderón, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kawagdan, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Cayetano Alan Peter, Cayetano Maria Laorni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalao, Coangeli, Angelica, Coelizaldi, Coangco, Coliantes, Crisologo, Kua, Cuarezma, Cueva, Coliamat, Dagoo, Dalipe, Dalog, Datol, Daza, De Jesus, De Venetia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Del Mar, De Los Santos, De Los Omontalia, De Moporo Abdullah, De Moporo Khalid, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian, Epcas, Icleo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Rigel, Hermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Fariñas Ria, Fariñas Rudis Caesar, Fernández, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortún, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuente Belia, Gaite, Garbin, García José Enrique, García Pablo John, García Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Gato, Jerón, Go Ed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, González Aurelio, González Neptali, González Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Gulyas, Guya, Areesco, Ataman, Hernández, Herrera Di, Hoffa, Alos Jos, Javier, Jiménez, Coelisa, Co Wilton, Conghun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagón, Lara, Lazatin, Lea Tion, Legarda, Lim, Limcaichong, López, Loyola, Lusotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangodatatu, Marcoletta, Mariano Hernández, Marinio, Marquez, Martínez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natividad Negaño, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Juan, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaón, Owaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ortega, Owanadison, Pacia Alberto, Pacia Rogelio, Patiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramírez Sato, Ramos, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodríguez, Roman, Romero, Romo, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yeda, Romualdo, Romolo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbaria, Sacaluran, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Sánchez, San Copan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento, Saulog, Savellano, Ciao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mijan, Sinsoat, Swan Sing Estrelita, Swan Sing Horacio, Suárez Aleta, Suárez David, Suntai, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Taliado, Tambunting, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Shari, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Deves Arnolfo, Deves Jose, Tianco, Tolentino, Torres Gómez, Tulfo, Tupas, Chutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umalie Alfonso, Umalie Maria Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Valeriano, Valmarior, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villia, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva Eduardo, Villanueva Noel, Villiar, Villiaraza Suárez, Villiarica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waikorat, Zarate Zubiri.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed with reference of business.
Awel!
Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 302 members responded to the call.
With 302 members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of quorum. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolution on first reading as well communication and committee reports.
Is there objection? I hear now that the motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill.
Reference of Business, Billson First Reading, House Bill 6694, Granting Franchise to ABS-CBN Corporation, formerly ABS-CBN Broadcasting Corporation, Representative Rodríguez.
Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Bill 6695, Providing for Special Compensation and Survivorship Assistance to COVID-19 Health and Medical Personnel and First Responders, Representative Sacaluran.
To the Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee.
House Bill Number 6696 and 6697, Declaring Special Non-Working Holidays in the City of General Santos, Representative Banyas Nograles.
Committee on Local Government.
Resolutions, House Resolution 824, Urging the Committee on Agriculture and Food of the House to investigate on the reported bird flu outbreak in Hain Nueva Ecija and the preparedness of the government to contain the disease in the country, Representative Kabatbat.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 825, Urging the DOH to ease the out-of-pocket expenses of patients and clients of public and private dialysis centers and facilities, public and private medical diagnostic centers and other standalone health and medical facilities in relation to protocols adopted because of the COVID-19 health event, Representative Belmonte.
Defeat COVID Ad Hoc Committee.
House Resolution 826, Directing the Committee, House Committee on Human Rights, to investigate the series of mass arrests and other human rights violations perpetrated by law enforcers since the implementation of the ECQ and to recommend measures to ensure the protection of the civil and political rights of Filipinos in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic, Representatives Brosas, Zarate, Gaite, Castro Franz and Elago.
Committee on Rules.
Resolution 827, Directing the Committee on Health to conduct an urgent review of RA 11223, Universal Health Care Act in the light of complaints of OFWs regarding field health mandatory premium collection and premium rate hike, Representatives Brosas, Zarate, Coliamat, Gaite, Castro Franz and Elago.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 828, Expressing the profound sympathy and condolences of the House to the bereaved family of Mrs. Laura Sarriel Elorde, the grand matriarch of Philippine boxing, wife of former boxing champion Gabriel Flash Elorde, Representative Tambunting.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 829, Urging the Committee on Appropriations to determine the programs, activities and projects and savings in the General Appropriations Act that were reprogrammed, relocated and realigned through RA 11469, Representative Zarate, Gaite, Coliamat, Castro Franz, Brosas and Elago.
Committee on Appropriations.
House Resolution 830, Expressing sincere condolences to the bereaved family of Honorable Hi Harrison Ti Álvarez, former Senator, Representative Legarda.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 831, Calling for the ending, the current academic term, a universal past policy promotion of health literacy and providing an education emergency relief fund, Representatives Elago, Castro Franz, Zarate, Gaite, Coliamat and Brosas.
Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee.
House Resolution 832, Urging the Committee on Human Rights to investigate the human rights violations perpetrated during the implementation of the community quarantine, Representative Zarate, Gaite, Coliamat.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 833, Urging the Committee on Environment Natural Resources to investigate the deployment of PNP officers to violently disperse the people's barricade and facilitate the entry of fuel tanks for Osiana Gold's illegal mining operations, Representatives Zarate, Gaite and Coliamat.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 834, Directing the proper committee to inquire on the current status of implementation of RA 1105, Philippine Identification System Act, Representative Aragonés.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 835, Urging the Committee on National Defense to investigate the gun pointing incident made by the Chinese warship towards the BRP Conradoyap, Representative Zarate, Gaite, Coliamat.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 836, Commending the frontliners and essential workers in the Philippines for their invaluable and heroic services in time of the COVID-19 global pandemic, Representative Salo.
Committee on Defeat COVID Ad Hoc Committee.
House Resolution 837, Gradual and cautious lifting of the enhanced community quarantine, Representatives Abante, Garin Janet, Belmonte, Paduano, Zarate, Kimbo, Bordado, Brosas, Kabatbat, Castro Franz, Coliamat, Dagoo, Elago, Fortún, Gaite, Guya, Saulog and Tan Shari.
Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee.
House Resolution 838, Urging the appropriate government agencies to conduct COVID-19 testing to all drivers and conductors, aircraft pilots and its crew, ship captains and its crew, rail locomotive pilots and its crew before operation, Representative Sacaluran.
Defeat COVID Ad Hoc Committee.
House Resolution 839, Condemning the issuance of the NTC of a cease and desist order against ABS-CBN in wanton disregard of its commitment to both Houses of Congress to grant the broadcasting network a provisional authority to operate pending renewal of its franchise, Representative Fortún.
Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Resolution 840, Urging the House Committee on Human Rights to investigate the alleged presentation of Coca-Cola workers as rebels surrenderies amid the COVID-19 pandemic crisis, Representatives Gaite, Zarate and Coliamat.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 841, Directing the Committee on Transportation and order the Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee to inquire into the impact of the new normal to the transport sector, Representatives González Sandro and Lusotan.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 840, Directing the Committee on Labor and Employment and the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs and the Defeat COVID Ad Hoc Committee to inquire into the impact of the new normal to the hundreds of thousands of Filipino seafarers who lost their jobs, Representatives González Sandro and Lusotan.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 843, Expressing gratitude and appreciation of the House for the acts of heroism of our uniformed personnel, health and emergency frontline personnel, Representative Arenas.
Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee.
House Resolution 844, Directing the House Committee on Overseas Workers to inquire on COVID-19 on-site assistance, repatriation and reintegration of OFWs, both land-based and sea-based, Representative Mendoza.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 845, Urging the House through the Committee on Human Rights to condemn and investigate the April 30, 2020 killing of Bayan Munna Coordinator Jose Reynaldo Jori Porquia in Ulilo City, Representatives Coliamat, Zarate, Gaite, Brosas, Castro Franz, Elago, Abante, Abaya among others.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 846, Calling on the appropriate House committees to investigate and file criminal cases as warranted against the commissioners and officers of the NTC and the solicitor general and such other officials and individuals for perjury and for violation of the Code of Conduct and Ethical Standards for Public Officials, Employees and the Anti-Graft and Corrupt Practices Act and other applicable laws, Representatives Defensor Michael.
Committee on Rules.
House Joint Resolution 30, Granting provisional franchise to ABS-CBN Corporation to operate until June 30, 2022, Representative Rodríguez.
Committee on Legislative Franchises.
Additional Reference of Business, Billson First Reading, House Bill 6698, Providing for voluntary membership of overseas Filipinos in the National Health Insurance Program, Representatives Gaite, Zarate, Coliamat, Castro Franz, Brosas and Elago.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 6699, Abolishing the Optical Media Board, Representative Salo.
Committee on Government Organization and the Committee on Public Information.
House Bill 6700, Banning and declaring illegal pogos and operations, Representatives Abante, Garin Janet, Belmonte, Zarate, Gaite, Castro, Franz, Brosas, Coliamat, Bordado, Fortún, Dagoo, Guya de Jesus, Epcas, Limcaichong, Núñez Malanyaón, Yu and Laxon Noel.
Committee on Games and Amusements.
House Bill 6701, Amending RA 7925 by abolishing the NTC and transferring its powers and functions to the DIC, Representative Abante.
Committee on Government Organization and the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 6702, Penalizing the dishonesty or untruthful declaration of any patient in times of public health emergency or pandemic, Representatives Fariñas Ria and Fariñas Rudis Caesar.
Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee.
House Bill 6703, Providing for a Balik Provincia Program, Representative Savellano.
Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 6704, Increasing and standardizing the minimum salary grade of all government medical practitioners, Representative Defensor Michael.
Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 6705, Authorizing the grant of special risk allowance to frontline public health workers in times of public health emergency, Representatives Olivares.
Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee.
House Bill 6706, Providing for recovery assistance package for higher education and tech voc education and training, Representative Go Mark.
Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee.
House Bill 6707, Encouraging a baseline polymerase chain reaction COVID-19 testing for vulnerable members of society, Representative Garin Janet.
Defeat COVID Ad Hoc Committee.
House Bill 6708, Establishing the television broadcasting education program as an alternative learning system for basic education.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 6709, Establishing a COVID-19 Unemployment Reduction Economic Stimulus Fund and instituting mechanisms for the implementation, Representatives Cayetano, Alan Peter, Villa Fuerte, Duterte, Legarda, Romualdes Ferdinand, Yap Eric, Cayetano Maria Laorni, Defensor Michael and Si Alvarado.
Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee.
House Bill 6710, Institutionalizing an installment payment scheme on basic utility bills during calamities, Representatives Tolentino.
Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, today being a Monday, pursuant to our rules, I move that we open the Privilege Hour.
Is there objection? I hear now that the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, the first to avail of the privilege hour, I move that we recognize the Honorable Senior Deputy Minority Leader, the Honorable Janet Garin.
The Honorable Senior Deputy Minority Leader, Janet Garin, hereby recognized.
Maraming salamat po ginawang speaker. If I can have my slides please. Can we have the first slide?
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend such a procedure.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues. Kahapon po'y pinagdiwang natin ang Mother's Day. As a pagsilip ko sa social media, pakikipag-usap sa mga ina na aking personal na kakilala, hindi ko po maiwasang maisip kung gaano karami sa kanila ang may daladlang pangamba sa panahong ito. As a mother myself, I could not help but think, how many of these mothers now fear for the safety of their families and children at this point in our lives? All because of COVID-19. for the safety of their families and children at this point in our lives, all because of COVID-19? Ilan po ba sa atin ang takwa, kinakabahan, at hindi alam kung saan ang patutunguhan nito? How many of these mothers are unable to work, concerned about their partner's daily earnings, or are forced to do mental gymnastics if only to make ends meet? How many of these mothers pray that sooner rather than later, this health concern would end, so that their families could return to some degree of normalcy? The second slide, please. Hindi po natin may pagkakaila, COVID-19 is here to stay. Until when, we still do not know. What is very clear is that transmission will only slow down when a sufficient proportion of the population possesses immunity. Ano po bang ibig sabihin nito? Ibig po sabihin, dadahan-dahanin lang ni COVID-19 'yung kanyang pagkakalat, o ang kanyang pananakit sa tao, kung marami na sa atin ang mahawa. And that is very difficult, because in the process of generating herd immunity via natural infection, we end up sacrificing lives. Ang labis na nakalungkot bilang kongresista at dating kalihim ng kalusugan, batid kong walang agarang lunas o bakuna laban sa COVID-19. While the world's scientists, researchers, and medical professionals grapple at the frontlines to address the further spread of the virus, governments around the globe are faced with a very difficult decision. On the one hand, to bring to halt almost every component of daily life, if only to mitigate contamination, while on the other hand, there is a need to balance the economic and financial well-being of every family. Ang narinig ko nga sa ilang nakapanayam natin, kung hindi virus ang papatay sa kanila, gutom na dala ng kawalan ng trabaho ang parang magiging hantungan nila. The next slide, please. We have a long-lasting pandemic, and without a vaccine or an effective antiviral medicine, we have to strategize. Hindi po pwedeng hindi na lang po tayo gagalaw. Hindi po pwedeng hihintayin na lang tatin na patuloy tayong inaatake ng virus. Hindi po pwedeng uupo na lang tayo at maghihintay ng mga taong gagalaw dahil ito po ay kinabukasan hindi lamang po ng bansang Pilipinas, kundi ng ating mundo. We have a long-lasting pandemic, and we cannot just wait for the vaccine to come, but we can do something. And I believe that the correct identification of the problem leads to the correct identification of the solution. That said, correct data is integral to move forward. In the case of this virus, we can only curb transmission if we try to be as aggressive as the virus in detecting the infected, especially those whom we could call the silent carriers. The next slide, please. Our goal, therefore, is to survive this pandemic while waiting for a vaccine for COVID-19. That will probably come in one and a half years, two years, the earliest will be a year, we do not know. Pero hindi po natin kailangan hintayin yun, kailangan pong malaman natin kung ano po bang ating dapat gawin. The next slide, please. There are actually four critical premises. First, we all know and we agree that flattening the curve translates to a deeper economic recession, and this is basically the reason why we have a lot of social unrest, we have a lot of people complaining. Dahil pag ating inaatupag ang kanilang kalusugan, eh nasasakripisyo naman ang kanilang kabuhayan, o ang mga sakit na hindi related sa COVID. O kung naman iisipin naman natin ang ekonomiya, etila naman magiging malaking kaba ito, o dagok sa usapang pangkalusugan. The testing centers will actually be the antidote to properly strategize our response. We are very happy that the COVID Lab Zar has already been appointed to make testing affordable, available, and accessible. Yes, we are catching up. It might be late, but it's better late than never. The fourth critical premise is a failure to adapt to the new normal that will result to lockdown-induced illnesses and deaths. The next slide, please. Ito po ang protective actions na ginagawa ng buong mundo. Border control, we have done that. Human behavior, physical distancing, hand washing, 'yung kasalukuyan at paulit-ulit na sinasabi natin sa ating mga kababayan, ginagawa po natin ito. Health status is very important. Why? Nutrition, exercise, and mental health is our very important components in fighting this virus. Pero ang katanungan, kapag patuloy tayong nakalockdown, patuloy tayo na walang trabaho, nasaan si nutrition? Kung hindi tayo makalabas at hindi makagalaw, nasaan si exercise? Kung mental health ang pag-uusapan, napakahirap sugpo in ito kapag ikaw eh walang pera na pamili ng gamot ng iyong pamilya, o pamili ng pagka-in, o gatas man lang ni baby. Healthcare facility, this includes the testing centers, and this is very important. Next slide, please. My, I note, according to various studies, about forty to fifty percent of COVID-19 cases are symptomatic, or in simple terms, walang sintomas. Ito po eh nakakatakot. While it is true that we have to give importance to our patients inside the hospitals, to our patients and PUIs, persons under investigation in our quarantine centers and our quarantine facilities, hindi po ba mas nakakatakot na nasa palibot natin ang kwarenta hanggang singkwenta porcentong natamaan ng COVID, pero sila mismo eh hindi nila ito alam. At ang pinakamasakit nito is that we have to accept the fact that as symptomatic as they are, they are actually the silent carriers, and they are considered as walking-time bombs that will put our country in jeopardy. But of course, we should not discriminate them, but we should allow detection of the carriers of this virus. This allows the undetected yet continuous spread of the virus. Worse, it was figured that out of those infected persons, or those whom we become infectious or contagious, they are actually contagious two days before the onset of symptoms, or even without symptoms at all. Sa madaling sabi po, patuloy po sila na nakakapanghawa. Next slide, please. Ang ibig po sabihin nito, kung hindi po natin maagapan at hindi matututukan ang mga taong may COVID-19, particular na po ang mga symptomatic, napakalaki at napakalubha ng tiyansa na may mapapasa nila ang virus sa mga kasamahan sa bahay, sa komunidad, sa trabaho, at maging sa publiko ng diman lang nila nalalaman. Next slide, please. Andami po kasing katanungan. Distinguished colleagues, allow me to explain this chart, which speaks a thousand words. The usual question is that, when does a patient becomes infectious to others? At ito eh nakikukumpara sa SARS na dating kinatakutan natin versus dito sa SARS-CoV-2 or the COVID-19. Kung titingnan po natin ang graph na ipinapakita natin, 'yung pulapo ay 'yung SARS, 'yung yellow naman ay ang COVID. Zero is the date of onset. Nakikita po natin na ang SARS, nakakapanghawa ka lang kung ang pasyenteng may SARS ay apat na araw na simula ng lumabas ang kanyang sintomas. Ibig po sabihin, mas madali natin makilala ang pasyenteng may SARS, subalit. Ang pasyenteng may COVID, wala pang ang sintomas, lima, apat, tatlong araw before magkasintomas eh nakakapanghawa na. At dun sa pinakaunang araw na makaramdam siya ng sintomas is actually already the peak of the infection. And this is why we really have to act. Next slide, please. Ito namang po ang sinasabi nating diagnostic detection target. Just to explain, 'yung pong antigen o green eh yang po ang ay virus. Ang nucleic acid po ay ang parte sa loob ng virus na kung saan siya ay hindi kasama sa patuloy na pagmutate ng COVID-19. The virus is not yet done. It is still in evolution and is continuously mutating. But as it mutates, we are very happy that mutation happens at the surface, in the envelope, in the spikes of the coronavirus, not inside. And this is where we have to act, because that is the key to developing the vaccine, and that is also the key to testing our patients. Ang ibig po sabihin, 'yung nucleic acid, yang po ang nasa loob ng pinakabilog at pinakacentro ng coronavirus, yang po ang dinidetermine ng ating PCR or polymerase chain reaction testing. 'Yun namang pong IgM at Aygg, ay dalawang antibodies. Ano po ba ang antibodies? Ito po eh mga parte na ginagawa ng ating katawan bilang response, or pagsagot, or reaksyon ng ating katawan kapag ang virus ay pumasok sa atin. Simula po at nagsisimulang tumasa ang IgM, or the early antibody response, at day five, and it actually peaks somewhere between the seventh to the tenth day. Ibig sabihin po niyan, nakikita po ninyo, nagkakaroon po ng overlap ang presensya ng virus at ang early antibodies. On the fourteenth day, nagsisimula pong maging masyadong mataas ang IgG, which is the long, the delayed reacting antibody, pero kapag ito po eh nandyan, malamang, lalo na kapag ikay negatibo sa IgM, ikaw eh meron ang protection, or some sort of immunity to the virus. It is therefore important that if you want to intercept the transmission, we allow a combination of both. But it is more important that the forty to fifty percent carriers be detected by the RT-PCR test, kasi kung tayo lang po eh maghihintay, at hihintayin natin, atakihin tayo ng atakihin, talo po tayo sa laban at sa giera na ito. Next slide, please. I don't want to be sound very technical, but with the indulgence of my colleagues, this is a very important slide. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Okay. Ang ibig po sabihin ng density ay ang kapal, o ang dami ng viral particles sa loob ng tao. Ito po ang pag-aaral na ginawa ng Taiwan dahil na una silang nagiging konti, napakonti 'yung kanilang incidents. And upon determination, the density of COVID-19 in patients were apparently very high two to three days before the onset of symptoms, up to the fourth or the fifth day of the onset of symptoms. Ibig sabihin po, tatlong araw na wala pang sintomas, hanggang limang araw, simula ng unang araw na nagkasintomas ang pasyente, 'yung po nagkukumpul-kumpul ang napakaraming COVID-19. And if you look at the next slide on your right, which is very important, we are testing the red faces. We are only testing the symptomatic patients. Ibig sabihin, in a nutshell, we are not only one step behind, we are several steps behind. The face in between the two scissors is actually the deceiving face. Kung titingnan mo, parang wala siyang sakit dahil wala siyang sintomas. At kung hindi natin 'yan mahanap, dahil 'yung po eh kwarenta hanggang singkwenta porcento na nahawaan ng COVID, we will never be able to win this war. That is why it is very important to take two bold steps ahead of the virus, identify the symptomatics, we provide an area where the COVID that is hiding in the bodies of our people, of our families, can immediately be identified. To this end, as a doctor, I believe we must have a baseline test for polymerase chain reaction COVID-19 testing for the vulnerable members of our society for the purpose of intercepting the COVID-19 transmission. By vulnerable members, we refer to everybody going back to work who have comorbidities. And that is the very title and the purpose of the bill that I have filed this morning, and I am putting forward in this great chamber. Simply put, with your help, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, we set in motion a bill that will not only help curb, but ultimately crush COVID. In crushing COVID, we need to find Troy, the COVID that has landed on you. Kung ang administration po meron bill, 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 ang paniwala ko kailangan naman natin ang test, 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 upang masugpo ang pagkalat ng COVID. That it does, it is necessary to widen and facilitate reliable COVID-19 testing centers that is available, accessible, and affordable for our vulnerable members of society. I cannot overemphasize this, knowing the extent of infection that will allow our country's decision-makers and strategies to plan accordingly. Napakahirap pong magplano kung hindi mo alam kung nasan ang kangkalaban. Maski anong plano, gastos, at meeting ang sangkatutak nating gawin, eh kung hindi naman natin alam kung nasan silang lahat, tila wala po tayong mapupuntahan. Claro ang hindi po tayo maaring mga pa, o manghula sa pagdating na sakit na ito. Strategiyang nakasandig sa agham at medisina ang kinakailangan. Ito po ang ginawa ng mga bansa gaya ng South Korea na nagawang agapan ang pagkalat ng sakit. To be fair and honest, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, we cannot say we are flattening the curve, because we have less than ten percent of the Filipinos tested. In fact, we even haven't reached one percent. We are not talking about an electoral survey here, where the sample size can be deemed a representative of the population. We are talking about lives here, and that every life counts, and therefore everyone should be well accounted for. This is only possible in a situation where we aggressively test, test, test. A difficult and challenging balance between public health and the economy should be addressed. While people gradually enter the new normal, equipped with the knowledge of personal hygiene and physical distancing, the fact remains that the unaccounted percentage of the population that is symptomatic will definitely trigger a second wave of infections. To this end, it is important to aggressively take two steps ahead of the virus. Testing the vulnerable asymptomatics, specifically those with comorbidities, will allow our country to first, immediately isolate asymptomatic COVID-19 patients, providing early intervention and ultimately reducing mortality. Second, early protection of patients, household companions, and coworkers, since studies have shown that this is the primary areas of transmission. Mas nakakapanghawa si COVID sa mga kasamahan mo sa bahay at kasamahan mo sa trabaho. Kung nakahalubilo mo lang ng sandali sa isang sasakyan, hindi siya masyado nakakapanghawa. Third, it would allow us to sustain the gains of the initial lockdown while we allow gradual economic return. Fourth, this is not just flattening the curve, but, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, this is simply crushing the curve, because we hit the virus in its hideout. As member of government, we realize our limitations and resources, but time and again, government has shown that with the backing of the private sector and the support of our people, by espousing the true meaning of bayanihan, the objective of healing as one can become a tangible reality rather than remain a mere slogan. We can only win the war against COVID-19 if we, both the government and the private sector, work hand in hand. It is for this reason that I support for the call for stronger, bolder partnerships with private enterprise, especially in the new normal. The new normal not only characterizes the post ECQ or GZQ situation, the new normal is the mindset by which we should adjust economic and social activity, or in short, our own way of life. And in my mind, the new normal should be making new partnerships between government and the private sector across all sectors more normal. This entails putting up more government-facilitated, privately, the private-sector-supported laboratories, or allowing for more hospitals, both public and private, to receive the medical aid for them to address the current and foreseen demands brought about by the virus. I laud the efforts of the private sector, who together with the Philippine Center of Entrepreneurship, or the GoNegocio Foundation, has initially started activating six government hospitals and one private hospital to make testing available, especially in the provinces. It is allowing the general public to gain information down to the home level and screening incoming OFWs and foreign visitors to ensure... and screening incoming OFWs and foreign visitors to ensure that they are not carriers. It is about shifting our governing philosophy from merely arresting the ECQ violator to make sure we arrest the further spread of the virus by knowing who really is a carrier and who is not. Needless to say, crushing COVID goes beyond a whole-of-government approach. What is needed is a whole-of-nation approach, where government facilitates for the private sector to bring in both the technical and financial expertise to combat this virus, where the private sector in turn supports the health policies of the government towards the betterment of the majority of our nation, and focus on supporting those who have less in life rather than find means for opportunity or profit generation. This bill, that is now being dubbed as House Bill 6707, puts forward and ensures the safety of the people in the workplace and families in their abode as we continue to work on identifying and determining the carriers of the virus who show no symptoms at all and remain to be a serious threat to our society. The bill outlines the coverage and methodologies for coordination for our nation to gradually regain its footing in the midst of the pandemic. The bill also seeks the establishment of CTAF, or COVID Testing Assistance Fund, for government to tap, and the creation of the so-called emergency pandemic leave, which private employers may invoke and management will be guided to enforce so as not to hamper the safety of those returning to the workplace. And returning to work must be seen as an operational objective of this government, not come what may, but sooner. Sooner, sooner, and it should be now. Claro namang po na hindi natin pwedeng i-self-quarantine o i-home quarantine ang ekonomiya ng anim o labing dalawang buwan pa. Katumbas po niyan ay gutom at pasakit para sa ating mga kababayan. As we shift to the new normal, it is time that we expand the testing that the public demands and needs. Sa pagbabalik nating lahat sa trabaho at maghahanap buhay, tungkulin ng gobyerno siguraduhing ligtas ang nakakarami. Ultimately, we must make sure that our countrymen are truly fit to work in safe workplaces. Yet, I cannot emphasize that the core to our strategy is to test, 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 and again, test, test, test. This will be the only way that we can make a living a little bit normally in the new normal, a possibility. Kahit anong iwas o paglayu po natin, minsan ay susubukin talaga tayo ng panahon at tatawagin ang pagkakataon para magsama-sama sa isang laban na di kinikilala ang pangalan ng partido, ang pinagmulang bayan o distrito, ang kasarian, ang paniniwala, o ang estado. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, unity and speed are our great weapons against COVID. Since March 11, we have been repeatedly calling for unity and speed. At ito po ay hindi na kailangang ipanawagan ngayon, eto na ay kailangang ipwersa. Because to crush COVID, solidarity is a fundamental key. And this solidarity is something that we cannot demand or impose. Solidarity comes naturally when our countrymen see that their public servants, their leaders, are the first to put the country above self-interest. Solidarity wells up when every sector of society sees that those leading have a well-drawn-up plan and vision. Solidarity ultimately is cemented in people's hearts when they feel that they can truly trust their government on matters as important as the safety and well-being of their families and their children. Bilang isang ina, Kongresista at Doktor, nagpapasalamat po ako sa oras na binigay ninyo sa akin sa araw na ito. Ang hining at panawagan ko, agaran po nating maipasa ang crushing COVID Act, which is now known as House Bill 6707. If this will be certified urgent, we will be making our country a safer and a better place to live in in the next years that we are awaiting the vaccine. Let us crush COVID together. Muli, maraming salamat po.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from Sagipartylis, our Deputy Speaker Dante Marcoletta, for his interpretation.
The Honorable Deputy Speaker Dante Marcoletta, sir, be recognized.
Salamat po, Mr. Speaker, and good afternoon to everyone. I'd like to congratulate my Comare, Congresswoman Janet Garin, for her very timely privileged speech. However, I will have to ask her a few questions that I believe are quite important to be clarified on. I'd like to know, Mr. Speaker, whether or not the medical sentiments expressed by our colleague had been formally conveyed to the proper authorities of the government.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, and in fact, that is the reason why, after several consultations, text messages, and calls to the proper authority, we are very proud that together with the private sector, they have initiated supporting not only government hospitals, but also private hospitals, so that testing will reach every house and every corner of our country. And that is also the reason, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, that I was compelled to file the Act Encouraging a Baseline PCR COVID-19 Test for the Vulnerable Members of Our Society for the Purpose of Intercepting COVID-19 Transmission. Because if the current protocols of the Department of Health only focuses on symptomatic patients, then the 40% to 50% carriers of the virus will never be identified. And we will allow them to roam around. We will allow them to infect their families, their colleagues, and the whole country. And that is the reason why that as the Department of Health embarks and continues taking care of our patients, we also act as Congress to pass this law, which will enable the privately-supported government and private testing centers to test all those going back to work, so that we will immediately test, isolate, and allow the rest of the negative patients to continue working. But with that, this bill also entails the provision of a testing subsidy of 1,500 to 1,700 pesos that can be charged to the medical assistance program, the DSWD funds, or even the Phil Health.
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to know the response taken by the proper authorities based on the assessment of our colleague. How was it received? And what action did they take? Because it seems to me, all these assessments that has been disclosed before us are time-bound. We cannot waste our time, Mr. Speaker. I think we have reached the point of emergency. This is, this is a very threatened disease. We cannot afford to delay on any action to be taken by the government. It will be very assuring, Mr. Speaker, if my colleague will be able to assure us that the proper authorities accepted all these findings or the recommendations and the assessments for them to be able to act swiftly, or in behalf of our people.
Thank you for that, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues. Initially, the intention of this program was for the district and my constituency, the southern part of Iloilo. And in so doing, there were coordination meetings with our Deputy Speaker Lauren Legarda, and we were thinking of implementing this in the province of Antique and the southern part of Iloilo. Be that as it may, when it reached the private sector, many poured their support. And this reached our chief implementer, General Galvez, whom I see as very quick and fast in their response. And of course, the newly-appointed COVID Labs Czar, Vince Dizon. And I received a call from General Morales, the President of Phil Health, all with the intention of supporting this program. So I do hope that the Department of Health, its leadership, and its officers... While we have already generated initial support, we do admit that they also have a lot of things on their table. And that is basically the reason why a whole-of-government approach and the involvement of the private sector and the government sector, including other government agencies, should also be tapped. In fact, it was Secretary Galvez who said, like, "Why limit it to certain areas? Why don't we implement it to the whole country?" Because intercepting the asymptomatic carriers, which they agree based on studies is around 44% to 50%, is very important. This will be part of the new normal that we will be living in the next months to come. We will initially start a baseline PCR testing that would entail a possibility of filling up our quarantine centers. And the workplaces, once cleared, will be observed for remnants of the virus. Meaning, it is, it might not be the perfect solution, but it is a near-perfect, whole-of-government, whole-of-nation approach towards leaving our country and surviving this pandemic while we are awaiting the vaccine.
Sir Speaker, you might have noticed that the title of our honorable colleague is "Finding Cloy". I do not wish to think that it will be translated into finding Nemo, because we all know that this disease is invisible. It is something that it is not easy to defeat. That is why the subject matter is so important, and the time element is very, very crucial here, Mr. Speaker, because as ordinary mortals, like the most of us here, myself not being a scientific man, I'm not a doctor, I am not a technical man. So I don't wish that the speech will only be something that is like preaching to the choir. We all know and understand how important is it to defeat COVID-19. And I'd like to see, to find, really, finding it like Cloy, not Nemo. Because everything else depends on how we defeat it at the time that we can really do it at the very least, Mr. Speaker, at the time we needed it most. I'd like to thank my colleague, Mr. Speaker, for bringing a very sensitive but crucial issue that the government is supposed to tackle not only today, but I think we needed the best people that should tackle it. And we have no luxury of time, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much. Thank you, and good afternoon.
Thank you very much, distinguished Deputy Speaker. Thank you very much, distinguished colleagues. Just for the information of everybody, yesterday, our Majority Leader was actually on a phone call. I was with him for a long time, together with the Regional Director of Region 8 and the other congressmen in the Visayas. And as a way of showing their support, because the newly-established COVID testing center in Tacloban has a capability of 100 tests per day, the members of our legislators, our colleagues from Region 8, decided to increase this, transform it into an automated laboratory in the coming days that will allow its capacity from 100 tests per day to 1,000 tests per day. And if there will still be another need, he was very firm, our Majority Leader was telling us, that they can still, and we can all contribute to increasing it to 3,000 tests capacity per day. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from 6 District of Quezon City, Congressman Keith Belmonte, for his interpretation.
The Honorable Congressman Keith Belmonte, sir, be recognized.
Will the senior deputy minority leader accede to a couple of clarificatory questions, Your Honor?
Definitely, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues.
At the outset, Mr. Speaker, I would like to state that I am fully supportive of the privileged speech and the bill being filed by the Honorable Janet Garin. Naniniwala po talaga ako na kailangan talaga natin ang test, test, test. And kailangan din po talaga natin ang bilisan, at damihan 'yung capability ng mga laboratory natin para hindi ho 'yung katulad ngayon na umaabot ng dalawang linggo at the fastest bago makuha 'yung resulta. At best, sana ho, within 48 hours, kung pwede, within a couple of hours. So I do agree. However, meron po akong clarificatory questions na I hope maenlighten po ako and 'yung mga constituents ko na mas marunong po sa akin. So if you would allow, ma'am?
Definitely, Your Honor.
Ma'am, sabi niyo po, Mr. Speaker, sabi niyo po, na 'yung mga risk factors, 'yung mga comorbidity factors, ito 'yung pinakadelikadong tamaan. Pinakadelikadong maapektuhan, pinakamataas ang possibility na kailangan nila ng intensive medical care and pinakamataas ang risk na mamatay sila pag tinamaan po sila ng COVID. Ang sinasabi niyo po, risk factors on diabetes, ang may cardiovascular problems, may hypertension, may respiratory disease, may obesity, may old age. Gaano kataas ang normal? Tama po ang pagkaalala ko, ayon sa mga briefings, 80% ng tinatamaan ng COVID ay usually makakalagpas dito. Pero, lalong-lalo na ho, itong mga nasa risk factor na to, mas mataas 'yung chances na maging severe ang case nila or even umabot sa kamatayan. Gaano kataas po ito?
Tama po kayo, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague. Sa mga nagkakasakit ng COVID-19, 40 hanggang 50% ang asymptomatic, and they are presumed to be carriers dahil patuloy silang nakakapanghawa, maski hindi nila alam na may COVID sila. Dun sa naiiwang 50% to 60% na may sintomas, 80% doon ay mild. 'Yung iba, pagka medyo bata-bata, ewan lang nararamdaman. Ay hindi nila, nararamdaman sila, akala nila ordinaryo lang. The remaining 20% usually develops into moderate to severe. The acceptable mortality rate, o 'yung mga namamatay, ay dapat nasa dalawang porcento lamang. Subalit sa ating bansa nga, ngayon ito nasa 7% tayo. In other words, pagka hindi po natin mahuli 'yung 40 hanggang 50%ong carriers, at hindi natin sila agad-agad na mas separate, eh patuloy po silang nahahawa, nahahawa na ibang tao, hanggang mahagilap nila 'yung ating mga nanay, tatay, lola, lolo, 'yung mga may high blood, may mga sakit sa puso, may mga sakit sa baga, may diabetes. To add to this, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, eto po ang ating nalalaman sa ngayon. Pero ang virus po kasi, eh hindi pa tapos. It is still playing, it is enjoying its attention in the world. The virus is still evolving, it is continuously mutating. Subalit ang maganda lang dito, 'yung kanyang mga mutation ay nasa kanyang spike proteins, o 'yung parang ganun-ganun. At nasa kanyang palibot, 'yung banyang balat, or the envelope portion. Walang nagbabago doon sa kanyang looban. Ang ibig sabihin po niyan, eh 'yung mga sagot at 'yung mga gumagawang ng bakuna ngayon, at 'yung ating mga tests na ginagawa ngayon ay nakasaad dun sa loob niya. Ibig sabihin, 'yan po ang puso na dapat tirahin ng tao para mapatay natin si COVID.
Thank you for that, Mr. Speaker, Your Honor. Kaya ho, tama ba 'yung pagkaintindi ko? Kaya ho, ang advocacy niyo ay bukod sa lahat ng papasok at saka frontliners, priority na matest po natin itong mga vulnerable, itong mga may comorbidity at vulnerabilities na to? Tama po ba 'yan?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague. Kasi sa ngayon, although nakikita na lahat pwedeng mahawa, bata man, tinim-... bata man, teenager man, at makita siyang marami sa teenager, sa atin ngayong capability, when we increase the testing centers, kapag ikaw kasi ay nagtratrabaho at lumalabas ka, 'yung pong ating RO factor, o 'yung pagre-reproduce ng virus, eh mas malawak. Kasi magkakaroon ka na exposure pwedeng sa supermarket, pwede sa workplace. At pag inuna natin 'yun, maka-capture natin 'yung positibo at sila naman ang magiging bridge para ma-identify natin ang pinanggalingan niya. And this will actually be healthy individuals in their homes or in their workplace. 'Yun ang magiging susi ng pagtahimud, that will be the answer to the puzzle. In other words po, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, parang kung ito po eh meron kang isang libong bigas, let's say Filipino, meron tayong 110 million Filipinos, or bigas, no? Pero naghalo doon, meron doong brown rice, meron naman doong white rice. 'Yung brown rice, eh sila 'yung maganda ang kanilang immunity at hindi sila nahawa, pero meron doon 'yung mga puti na nahawa. So 'yung mga yuon, eh kailangan mo isa-isahing kunin. Doon sa populasyon na may mga bigas, kunin mo at hintayin mo na 'yung brown na hindi pa nagiging puti, eh maagapan mo. In other words, it's actually attacking the hideouts of the virus. And if you ask me, how many hideouts do they have, we do not know. Maybe if we will be able to test 5 to 10% of our population and we can see the profile of the population that has been affected, the specific provinces and islands, then we can have a bigger picture. And that is actually the bible that our decision-makers and strategists dearly needs.
I agree fully with the sponsor, Mr. Speaker, Your Honor. Ang tanong ko po, assuming na test, prioritize na i-test natin 'yung mga comorbid, 'yung may comorbidities, 'yung mga high-risk factors, okay? San natin po sila ilalagay? I would like to put this in context, Mr. Speaker, Your Honor. Alin ba nga ngayon, ang dami ho naming experience na namatay ka, na may, sa x-ray lumabas, may tama ka sa baga. Ang presumption ngayon, ah kahit hindi ka na-test dahil may tama ka sa baga, diretong sunog 'yan. Hindi ka, kahit hindi ka na-test, ang presumption is, pwedeng COVID-related 'yun whether na-test or hindi. Second, sa testing centers, laging ang problema namin ngayon for isolation, sa isolation centers. Eh paano kung may kasamang matanda 'yan sa bahay at saka may kasamang bata 'yan sa bahay, o may kasamang may sakit 'yan sa bahay? Ang more often na nangyayari sa actual practice sa ground ay, nako, hindi kaya ng isolation center, kasi for asymptomatic ito. Punta kayo sa hospital, pagdating sa hospital, ang sasabihin ng hospital, eh, teka, wala ka pang teste. Hindi ba natin alam kung hindi, pero risk factor ka. At saka po, nuna kami, san natin kayo ilalagay? 'Yun 'yung, so, hindi ho ba dapat, when we increase the testing, we increase the isolation facilities? Maybe dapat, kasama po nito, is we increase din the capability to take care of those at high risk. So that may isolation centers na dedicated para sa kanila or may hospital facilities na dedicated din para sa kanila? Kasi may gap po dyan. Ngayon na mababa pa ho 'yung testing, lalong mababa po 'yung turnover from the test to the actual results, may butas na po tayo dyan. Hindi ho kaya, lalo na, pag nag-ramp up tayo sa testing at nag-ramp up po tayo doon sa turnover ng results, lalaki ang problema natin dito sa mga may risk factors na to. And hindi ho ba dapat nakasama ng bill na to and 'yung preparations ng national and local governments na iramp up din po natin 'yung facilities para sa doon sa mga pinaka-at risk? Kasi ho, sa loob ng communities, namatagal ko na ho ang sinasabi, kahit anong gawin po natin sa dikit-dikit 'yung mga bahay, dahil sa ang liliit ng mga kwarto, social distancing is almost, in reality, an impossibility. Ibig sabihin, pag may pumasok dyan, nakalusot through the supply chain or through the small percentage na mga pasaway, may pumasok dyan, tatamaan si lola, tatamaan si may hika, tatamaan 'yung lactating mother, o 'yung may, si buntis. Hindi ho ba dapat, kasama din po dito, is lagyan po natin ng facilities para maasikaso 'yung mga pinaka-at risk, Mr. Speaker, Your Honor?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, distinguished colleague. Napakaganda po ng iyong mga katanungan at ng iyong mga komento, tama po kayo. Isa-isahing po natin ang mga nasabi ni Congressman Belmonte. Una, paano 'yung mga men nararamdaman at sinususpektahan mo may COVID sila, kaya kailangan mo silang dalhin sa quarantine centers? Dalawa po, pwede po itong positibo, pwede rin naman pong negatibo. Kaya nga po ako ay nananawagan ng mas malawak na testing centers na 'yung mga bureaucracy at mga requirements na pwede namang may alternative. Eh ilang weeks na napinagbimitingan ng departamento 'yan, eh agad-agad i-release niyo na. There is no monopoly of knowledge among certain individuals. When we widen the scope of experts, we allow many brains to function as one. We achieve our target. Bakit po sinasabi kong yes and no? Kapag ikaw ay may comorbidities, let's say may sakit ka sa puso, biglang inuubo ka ngayon, PUI ka, dadaling ka sa quarantine center. Dahil mababang iyong resistensya, kung meron sa quarantine center positibo sa COVID, eh madali kang mahawa.
Correct.
Pero kung ikaw namang pala ay may COVID at nasa bahay ka na, mahahawa mo 'yung iba.
Correct.
So it's choosing between the devil and the deep blue sea. And the solution there is again, testing. So sa mga papasok at sa lahat na gustong tumulong, na i-upgrade, i-automate, pagandahin 'yung ating mga testing centers at gawin itong malawakan, dapat wala nang humarang. Dahil nakakapagod pong magtrabaho, na 'yan po eh extra na tulong sa ating mga kababayan, kung marami naman ang bureaucracy na iyong sasalubongin, eh tila nakaka-frustrate. But again, as doctors, we were taught not to be frustrated, but just to keep on doing our job, because it is not our job, it is our obligation. So 'yan po ang sanggot doon sa quarantine centers. How will this work? Tama po kayo, we will be needing more quarantine centers. And dyan na po nakatayo 'yan. Sa mga probinsya, marami po tayong quarantine center, bawat bayan meron, pero marami po doon ang hindi naman puno. Just like for example, Leite, where our Majority Leader who just, who may saw, facilitated the testing center. But at the same time, habang ginagawa niya 'yung testing center, 'yung mga governors, 'yung mga congressmen, 'yung mga mayors, sama-sama na nagpapabilisan ang quarantine centers. This should be given as an obligation of the DOH regional offices to work hand-in-hand with the LGUs in coming up with the quarantine centers. Pag po nagkaroon na tayo ng maraming testing centers, and that just the other day, the Philippine Center of Entrepreneurship rolled out support for six testing centers. I believe next week, there will be another six. And then there will be another, I think, 10 from the House of Representatives. In other words, magkakaroon po tayo ng jump from the manual laboratories na kung saan mano-mano, napakahirap at nakakapagod, eh gagawin mong automated kung saan may robot na natutulong sa'yo. 'Yan po eh magpapalawak ng ating kapakanan at 'yung resulta ay mas accurate at mas timely. So ang mangyayari dito, kapag ikaw ay tines, within the day, you will be having your result. Kapag ikaw ay positibo, immediately sa isolation center ka. There should be no home quarantine. I was against home quarantine since day one because this is a virus na hindi pa natin lubusan kilala. Ibig sabihin, 'yung quarantine center mapupuno 'yan, pero 'yan ay mapupuno ng mga pasyenteng positibo sa COVID pero walang sintomas. 'Yun namang positibo sa COVID. Tapos merong sintomas, ay ilalagay natin sa ating mga ospital para maaga silang maagapan. 'Yun namang galing abroad, at kailangan natin i-quarantine ng 14 days. Iba naman ang kanilang quarantine center. You do not mix all of them. In other words, ang mangyayari niyan, habang tinitest natin ang lahat ng dumarating, pagkatapos ng test, pag positibo, walang sintomas, quarantine center. Pag positibo, walang, may sintomas, ospital. Let's call the quarantine center na positibo isolation center, para hindi tayo malito. Uulitin po natin, quarantine center para sa naghihintay pa ng test results, isolation center sa positibo na asymptomatic, ospital naman para sa positibo na may sintomas. The quarantine center will actually be the area for the OFWs na negatibo sa PCR, pero maghihintay ng two weeks. Eto namang ating positive isolation centers. Dyan natin ilalagay 'yung ating mga overseas workers, returning residents, na positibo, walang sintomas. Isasama natin doon 'yung mga nagbabak to work at nagpositibo sa PCR na walang sintomas. In other words, all the carriers, the confirmed carriers will be in isolation centers. The quarantine center will only be for those who are awaiting the results habang may backlog pa tayo. Pero pag nawala mo na 'yung backlog, all the quarantine centers will only house the asymptomatic positive patients. You should not mix everybody and all the PUIs there because you are making those with comorbidities nearer and nearer to the source of the infection. Pangatlo po, meron po kayong tinanong. Social distancing sa urban areas, congested houses, tama po kayo doon? And again, we go back to the core of House Bill 6707, which says there should be massive testing at an affordable price that Phil Health will only pay either 1,500 pesos to 1,700 pesos per person tested para maging kaya ng gobyerno natin. Kasi kung napakamahal ng testing at kung ang hinalocate ng Phil Health ay 8,000, nahihirapan tayong sagarin sa bawat Pilipino na miyembro ng Phil Health. When that happens, mask 'yung bahay mo na maliit, eh dose kayo nakatira. Kung na-test mo 'yung dose at agad-agad tinanggal mo 'yung positibo, there is very minimal chance that they will infect each other. Again, we go back. The solution is to test the asymptomatics but are vulnerable in getting the virus.
Thank you very much for that, Mr. Speaker, Your Honor. I do agree, it's test, 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 and mas mabilis na turnaround ng mga laboratories. Thank you very much. I have no more, no further questions, Mr. Speaker, Your Honor.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from 3rd District of Camtsur, the Honorable Gabby Bordado, for his interpolation.
The Honorable Gabby Bordado is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Naitanong na 'yung mga questions na dapat naitanong ko. So, Mr. Speaker, let me just give a very brief manifestation. As former Secretary of Health, the Senior Deputy Minority Leader, Dr. Janet Garin, knows whereof she speaks, particularly on matters pertaining to health and disease control. And, Mr. Speaker, she has even used a very popular acronym, CLOI. Not crash landing on you, but COVID, landing on you. Mr. Speaker, I have been advocating for the immediate conduct of effective, efficient, and protocol-based mass testing throughout the country. And I am happy that the former Secretary of Health and now the SDML of Congress is fully supporting this move. I also agree with her that we can only come up with the proper strategies or responses of COVID-19 if we have the correct basis for such strategies. And I also agree with Deputy Speaker Marco Leta that this particular program is time-bound. The program being proposed by the former Secretary of Health is time-bound. And so, we have to do something at the shortest possible time so that this particular program will be immediately implemented in order to address our concerns regarding COVID-19. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. And thank you to the former Secretary of Health, now the Senior Deputy Minority Leader, Janet Garin.
Mr. Speaker, in response, because a question was texted to me, if I may, taking off, thank you very much Congressman Bordado for the support on House Bill 6707. Marami po kasi ang nagtatanong. Kasi po ang ibang resulta ng test matagal, meron iba limang araw, meron iba one week, meron iba 10 days. That is why, in the proposal that we have, there is a whole-of-nation approach. Because in the hospitals and laboratories that are being supported by the private sector, nakasaad po doon that all the results should be in and should be released within 24 hours. Kapag po ang ating sample, o 'yung swab, ay tumagal na, naging limang araw, pitong araw, pasensya po, pero sira na po 'yun. You can never have accurate results if your sample has been languishing for days. Especially so if it's already a week. For us to have accurate samples, kailangan pagkakuha po ng swab, mas maganda kung within a day or two, ma-check na po yuon. Dagdag ko lang po, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, marami po ang nalito dun sa mga lumabas na balita. Kung ang COVID-19 ba daw ay naging isang sexually transmitted disease dahil sa pagsusuri dun sa mga pasyenteng nag-negative na sa COVID, nakita ang positibo ang kanilang seminal fluid for the virus. This is not unique for COVID. No? Hindi siya unique for COVID. In fact, in Ebola, we had the same, in Zika, we had the same, na 'yung pasyenteng nagkasakit or napasukan ng virus. Pag lumabas na 'yung virus, negatibo ka na sa lahat ng test, but the virus remains in the seminal fluid. So this is not unique. It's part of the usual response of some viruses, especially if it's an emerging infectious disease. Etu ba eh nakakatakot? Siyempre, hindi pa natin alam sa ngayon, pero ang COVID-19 naman ay pulmonary. Baga ang tinatamaan niya, di nahahawa tayo through the lungs. So there is no science yet to prove that it is a sexually transmitted infection. It can stay in the semen. Well, the best thing to do is to wear a condom. But what is important is that, in the case of COVID-19, kissing is more dangerous than actual sexual contact or actual penetration.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from 3rd District of Camtsur, the Honorable Deputy Speaker Dong Gonzalez, for his interpolation.
Deputy Speaker Aurelio Gonzalez, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader. Correction lang po, I'm from 3rd District of Camtsur, I'm from the 3rd District of Pampanga.
Pampanga.
Anyway, thank you to our my dear colleagues and to our speaker, to our Senior Deputy Minority Leader. I will suppose to ask this question last, our special session, last March 23. Pero, masyado maiksip 'yung oras natin, we have only less than five minutes. Hindi po naitanong ito, at tama po 'tong sinasabi niya. Kasi ala sa araw-araw, kausap ko mga kibigan natin, ah, tor, ang sabi nila, COVID plus will continue to spread within another three months. Or, if we are not optimistic regarding this, Or, we are not optimistic regarding this, a year long, natamaan po po tayo. As much we have no, no solution to adopt the strategies of other countries. Madam Sponsor, if we have bill, bill, bill sa Department of Public Works, and we have plan, plan, plan sa Department of Agriculture, maganda po 'tong sa inyo, Department of Health, kailangan makaroon tayo ng test, test, test. In our country, we have 18 regions. In our country, we have 81 provinces. At meron po tayong 243, if I'm not mistaken, legislative district sa buong bansa. And we have island urbanized cities na 33. Meron tayong 105 na component cities, at meron pa po mga independent cities. Noon pong May 9, naglounce po kami at tinurnover po 'yung Molecular and Diagnostic Pathology Laboratory sa OC Lingad Hospital sa Pampanga. And we are very thankful, of course, to Governor, the Central Zone Governors, at papasalamat po kami lahat, dito sa Asian Development Bank na itinagalog, dito sa Molecular Diagnostic Pathology Laboratory. Ito po, nakakahalaga daw to ng 1.5 million dollars, or practically almost 77 million. Ngayon, ito, nakakacater ito ng 3,000 to 5,000 patients. Basipo sa sinasabi niyo ngayon, Deputy Senior Minority Leader, the former secretary, papano niyo ho gustong makaroon ng testing center? Dito sa sinabi kong probinsya, sa sinabi kong rehiyon, sa sinabi kong distrito. At pag saan natin itatayo, ilang pasyente, na how many months na dapat kailangan natin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Maraming salamat po, kagalanggaling Congressman.
At bagano po pala, madam, madam, madam Sponsor, magkano po pala bawat testing center na kailangan natin? Salamat po.
Yeah, maraming salamat po. Um, tama po yun, ang JB Lingad Hospital sa San Fernando, noon Sabado, eh nagkaroon nga ng groundbreaking, and we would like to thank the donor.
No, um, turnover, hindi po groundbreaking.
Turnover, not turnover ng molecular laboratory. Um, aside from that, last Saturday also, hindi palang nakakarating, but the Philippine Center for Entrepreneurship donated a set of machine to the province of Pampanga, which will be lodged in JB Lingad. And kasama rin po dito, kung magkakaroon po, kasi nga po, ang pinaplano po ng ating butihing speaker, kanya-kanya pong nagbigay ng donasyon, lalo na po si ating kagalanggaling na Congressman Dong Gonzalez, kung saan po 'yung mga sweldo ng kongresista eh, 'yung Mayo, wala nang tatanggap ng sweldo para itulong ito sa COVID response. So the contribution, the donation, the possibility of Congress donating plus the donation of the Philippine Center for Entrepreneurship will be able to generate 6 million pesos, and that will be for another 3,000 tests capability per day. In other words, we are looking at the possibility that JB Lingad by May 20, will have additional 3,000 capacity, bringing the total to 6,000 tests per day. Ang gagawin po doon, 'yung ADB-funded, 'yan po ang patuloy na magtetest ng mga pasyente, hindi lamang po ng Pampanga, kundi ng buong Region 3. At ito namang pinagtulungan ng GoNegocio at ng Kongreso, eh magkakaroon naman ng testing the people going back to work, 'yung mga asymptomatic na posibling pinataguan ng virus. At dun po sa puno, eh magkikita-kita, pagkakatulungan po para 'yung may mga sintomas inaasikaso, 'yung wala namang sintomas o 'yung mga carriers ay hinahanap. And if you were asking me kung magkano ang kailangan bawat testing centers, the contribution of the donors goes through the Philippine Center for Entrepreneurship. Depende po sa laboratory, where actually, was actually ranging from 2.5 million to 5 million pesos each setup. And each setup would have a capability of 1,500 tests per day. Pero just in case na merong liwe, nilalagay lang po natin, kasi maximum yun, nilalagay po natin sa average ng 1,000 tests generated per day. So dun po sa mga ibang ospital, kung medyo malaki ang kanilang space, eh ginagawa nating double or triple setup. In fact, may we also congratulate a Congressman and Deputy Speaker Dong Gonzalez dahil napakaaktibo po ng kanyang distrito. In fact, at 6 o'clock today, I believe the City of San Fernando will be having a conference with us. Dahil po, aside sa JB Lingad, eh gusto rin nila na, while you share the testing centers to the other provinces in Region 3, the City of San Fernando will also be embarking on putting up their own center that will be supported by the businessmen in Pampanga para po magkaroon din sila ng kaukulan na attention sa mga constituents ni Deputy Speaker Dong Gonzalez.
Salamat, Madam Sponsor. At ang tanong ko isa pa, Madam Sponsor, sa bawat reyon, we have 16 or 18 regions. You're talking of maglalagay tayo ng mga testing centers sa bawat regional hospitals, sa provincial hospitals? Kaya, binanggit ko sa inyo ang number of districts, number of provinces, number of highly urbanized cities, and number of component cities. So ang plano niyo ho, maglagay lang sa mga regional, all over the country, Madam Sponsor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague. Um, ang ginawa po namin, because I was given this task for the past 10 days, no? So naginventaryo po tayo, iba-iba po, case to case. Like example, in the case of Zamboanga, the Zamboanga Peninsula, at 'yung ating mga kasamahan who were actually calling, of course, Congressman Sharkey here. And they were not only concerned about Zamboanga. Inisip rin nila 'yung Basilan, Sulu, and Tawitawi. So the automated equipments that will test the people in Zamboanga and the whole archipelago in that area will be lodged at the DA, Department of Agriculture Office. Sa ngayon po, eh meron na silang memorandum of agreement with DOH. Um, they will be, it will be installed. The target is actually May 18, uh, May 18. Um, dun namang po sa Southern Philippines Medical Center in Davao, uh, that includes testing city, Davao del Norte, Davao Sur. Uh, the San Miguel Foundation donated one setup, uh, that's, um... But then, dahil meron pang lugar, minarapat nga ng ating mga kongresista doon na lagyan ng pangalawang setup so that Southern Philippines Medical Center can cater to a total of at least 3,000 tests per day. Hindi pa po ito nakakarating, pero sa pagkakaalam ko, before the week ends, it will be surely delivered and will start, will be installed. Dun namang po sa Leite, kung saan andun po 'yung ating butihing Majority Leader, pinili po nila 'yung isang lumang ospital. Kung ma-aalala niyo po, 'yung regional hospital na malapit sa capitolyo noon panahon ng Yolanda, ito po ina-wash out, pero naiwan 'yung struktura. Agad pong pinaayos ito ng personal na pera ng ating Majority Leader, bumili sila ng iilang equipments for a start, and then now to automate it and to make it, to expand it from 100 tests per day to 1,000 tests per day, the legislators, including the party list representatives from Region 8, will be coming forward. At pagkakaintindi ko rin po, it is scheduled to be delivered and start the installation either Wednesday or Thursday this week. Um, dun namang po sa ibang areas, kunyari si Melas Pinyas, minarapat po ng isang pribadong ospital, the Perpetual Hospital. Hindi ko lang po maalala, either Binyan or Binyan at tsaka Laguna, na binigyan namang po ito ng suporta ng ating mga businessmen. We have the Ayala Foundation, we have the Philippine Chamber of Commerce and Industry, we have the Chinese Chamber, we have the Indian Chamber, Bounty, Jollibee. Um, marami po 'yung, ah, the LT Group. Ah, sila po ang naglagay ng mga pond, at patuloy pa po na dumadagdag ito. Um, 'yung dun namang sa butuhan, ang isang tinitingnan, eh, City Hospital. So it's actually a case-to-case basis. Ang importante lang, eh, 'yung mga tao nila sa ngayon ay trinitrain na 'yung mga gamit habang paparating naman, eh ginagawa ng mga adjustment ng ating biosafety officers. So there is no fixed rule on where to put it, but what is important is that it is within the bounds of safety efficacy as mandated by the Department of Health and the Research Institute of Tropical Medicine.
Thank you, Madam Sponsor. So hindi palang bawat reyon strategic places lang, 'yung mga pwedeng bigyan ng mga testing centers?
Yeah, in fact, Mr. Chair, distinguished Deputy Speaker, 'yan po ang isang, it's actually the core of this program, 'yung sinabi niyo po. Dahil kailangan na po, sa ngayon palang, actually dati pa, meron na po tayong tinatawag na COVID Laboratory Testing Center map. Kung saan dun sa buong Pilipinas, ma-identify mo ilan 'yung posibling i-test, saan mo ilalagay, ano 'yung mga catchment areas. And we probably do that within the next two months. Then, we will be ready for the new normal. Dahil ang testing po, hindi lang po ito para sa lockdown, testing will actually be part of the new normal because while we go out, resume work, gradually bring back the economy, we also have to keep on testing ourselves. Una, baseline testing, then wala na, pero pagka may sintomas, eh, ibabalik ka agad at ipapa-test. Dun namang sa mga lugar na gusto mong makasiguro at meron ang baseline PCR testing, pwede namang pong imonitor sa paraan po ng mga kwalifikadong rapid tests that are actually validated already by the Research Institute of Tropical Medicine.
Thank you, Madam Sponsor. Uh, for your information and for our information, we have new cases today, as of 4:00 PM. We have 11,086 new patients, 11,086. As of 4:00 PM, at ang recovered po natin, is 1,999 patients. So, ang tanong ko lang po dito, Madam Sponsor, when is your timeline? Kasi po talaga lahat po tayo, lahat tayo, dagmamadali. Kung kailan natin pwedeng implement 'yan. Kasi palagay ko, oh, itong finail niyo, siguro agad-agad. Kasi very important, it's very urgent na kailangan gawin na natin. This is test, test, test. So, ano ang timeline niyo po rito? Kailangan ma-affirm muna itong finail niyo? O kailangan ako po, noon special session natin, may nakahanda po ako dito ng mga, ng mga presyo ng mga testing centers, kasi kasama ko, 'yung mga PUI, PUM, PUI, COVID-positive, 'yan po inestimate ko na eh. Every, every region, inestimate ko 'yan. Ngayon, itong finail niyo po, ang tinatanong ko po, kailangan, kailangan na kailangan natin na ma-implementa na po natin, isto mga testing centers.
Well, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, tama po kayo, no? There were actually a lot of bumps when we wanted to implement this. Um, simply because, of course, we understand masyado pong pagod na ang departamento at wala ngang namamahala sa pagpapalakan ng ating mga laboratory. If you remember during our first health cluster meeting, I pointed out the bottlenecks in the operation of the laboratory centers and why there was a need to appoint a laboratory czar. Be that as it may, 'yung implementation po, of course, with the leadership of our Majority Leader and the Region 8 Congressman, and with the persistence of our Deputy Minority Leader, Governor, Congresswoman, Shari Antan. Ang magkakaroon po ito sa Leite, we're looking at the implementation of Region 8, Davao, Region 7 within this week. Darating po 'yung ibang kagamitan by Friday, and we intend to implement that in Zamboanga, in Cebu, and in Pampanga. Um, after a week, mga ngailangan po kami ng sapat na panahon ulit. We need another 15 days to implement 10 more laboratories, and we will address it as the request comes. But very important for us now is to have the full support of the Department of Health and the Research Institute of Tropical Medicine. Dahil kung hindi po tayo sama-sama, natatahakin ang gera na ito, eh mas magiging watak-watak po ang ating response. So I believe that, um, there will be no reason for the department to close its doors on us because this program will redound to the general public. Kaya naniniwala po ako na wala po itong magiging gustot. Ang, ang siguro, ang kinakailangan na lang po dahil meron pong hangganan ang suporta ng ating private sector. While the private sector can contribute, make the machines available, and automate our laboratories, testing there non-employees will be a challenge. Kaya nga po, ang solusyon naman dito is that we have Phil Health, we have the medical assistance program, we actually have the DSWD fund. That will be, those will be the best funds so that we can provide between 1,500 to 1,700 pesos per patient tested. That is already a lot, lot cheaper if you look at the prevailing private hospital rates, and that will be affordable for the government. At mas magiging murap po 'yan kung ikumpara po natin sa mga buhay na mamawala, sa mga taong magugutom, at sa mga mamawalan ng trabaho kapag hindi pa natin i-expand ang testing centers. In a nutshell and in summary, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, in one week's time, we will be able to activate two laboratories. Either Davao and Eastern Visayas, or Western and Eastern Visayas. Next week, another three laboratories. In the coming week, seven additional laboratories. And on the fourth week, 10 additional laboratories. That is so far the laboratories that are funded in a pipeline.
And nabalita po 'yan, Mr. Speaker, Madam Chair. Uh, meron mo kayong ballpark figure kung magkano lahat? Ang kailangan 'yung funds for your proposal, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, dun po sa mga kontribusyon ng ating pribadong sector.
So you're just talking for the private sector, or you're not, you're not, you're not talking of the?
The private sector actually initiated, um, the setting up of the laboratories and its automation. So it depends on the extent that we will be putting up the laboratories. We are hoping that the Department of Health can immediately amend the requirement of a negative pressure room because that is the main bottleneck. We have already submitted our alternative proposal of giving additional biosafety cabinets and allowing our laboratory specialists to wear the PRPA. 'Yung pong PPE na parang astronaut ka, dahil 'yung po ang kanilang magiging proteksyon, and the special ducting, medyo technical po yoon, pero 'yan po ang solusyon doon sa bottleneck ng nirerequire na negative pressure room. Para namang po maging mas mabilis, 'yung training na theoretical naman ay gawin na lang na Zoom training para malaman kaagad ng ating mga spesyalista. Pagkatapos, 'yung actual training na pumupunta sa RITM or other subnational laboratories, mapapaiklian po yoon. Now, the total budget, if we test 5% of our population, we are looking at an approximate cost of 3 billion pesos. That's already for the testing kits and all the consumables. If we are going to test 10% of our population, we might be needing 6 billion pesos.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Palagay ko, 'yung 6 billion na yun, at this point in time, ah, madaling, madaling, ah, i-race 'yung 6 billion. Ang importante, kahagad bagad, napo natin 'yan, palagay ko, wala. Maguupo sa maganda 'yung panokala. At, ah, ang alawa, Mr. Speaker, ah, tinatanong ko lang po to, kasi bilang naging secretary ng Department of Health, eh, po, ah, kung gusto man, Janet Garin. Paghuba 'yung, halimbawa, ah, 'yung, 'yung halimbawa tayo, ah, ako, sa totoo lang po, less than 45 days ako, hindi lumalabas ng bahay. Pagba lumabas ako ng bahay, may posibilidad pong magkakaroon po tayo na, magkakaroon tayo na ng coronavirus positive?
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues. Ang problema po kasi natin ngayon, hinahanap lang natin 'yung virus kapag 'yung pasyente may sintomas. Mas nakakatakot po ang carrier kesa may sintomas kasi 'yung may sintomas, mas konte na lang ang kanyang virus. 'Yung pong wala pang sintomas, mas madami ang kanyang virus, at mas malaki ang posibilidad namang hawa siya ng iba. and the possibility is higher to spread because she doesn't have a problem. So, if we are quarantined, the quarantine and the lockdown is not meant to reduce the number of cases drastically. The purpose of lockdown is to wait. If there are 20,000 Filipinos that are infected, it won't happen in a month but it will happen in 4 months. It means the infected are more and more infected, but the total is still the same. Now, because we have been in lockdown for 55 days already, when we open our doors, it is expected that the 40% to 50% COVID carriers will be roaming free because they don't know that. This is the reason for this. To find all the viruses that are exposed that are not infected and can spread, it won't spread. So, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague, it's very important what Congressman Gonzalez said because he is actually advocating for safe workplaces, safe public areas, and safe common areas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Madam Sponsor. Thank you to the people. God bless the Philippines. God save the world. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the privilege hour be extended for another 30 minutes.
There is a motion? I hear none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from Second... A gentle lady from Second District of Nueva Ecija, Representative Miki Bilyolago.
Honorable Representative Miki Bilyolago is hereby recognized.
Thank you. Good afternoon to everyone. Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker. I have a question for our deputy Janet Garin.
Willing, Mr. Speaker.
My question is that it's very good of you to say that mask testing is necessary. My question is that if we are doing a testing center and quarantine center, are these expenses necessary to be reduced? Because we have a lot of LGUs that don't have such a good income. Maybe they don't want to have these facilities.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. It's good of you to ask. However, it doesn't need to be a LGU testing center because the local government units and quarantine centers and isolation centers are important to the region offices of the Department of Health. They are related to our trainings, seminars, and policy reviews. Since all of this will not be feasible at the time that we are in a pandemic, the regional offices of the DOH can help our local government chief executives for the quarantine centers and isolation centers. The COVID testing centers, a lot of them are now contributing to our private sector. So, when we started for the past 10 days, we were able to generate, I think, 28 million that paved way for seven laboratories. And when I went to Congress today, I heard that there are still 5 sponsors. In other words, it's getting bigger and bigger because they saw that this is the solution to our problem. So, my answer is that it won't be a LGU except probably for the infrastructure component, to adjust the basics. The manpower, the design that we made with a testing fee of between 1,500 to 1,700 pesos. There is an admin fee between 200 to 400 pesos that can cover for the manpower, everything that is needed. Because the cost of the test kit, up to the PPS, up to the consumables, even plastic pipettes, all of them are going to be 1,300 pesos plus the benefits. In other words, it's a sustainable program and we don't want the LGUs to spend on it because there are other programs under the new normal where the LGUs will have to keep on spending. And the biggest spending they will make here are the quarantine centers.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Deputy Janet. Because it's very good of you and the speech of your day. But I'm just saying that you said that we can ask for help from the DOH. But do you know the DOH? And they are always ready to help because we know in reality, what happened today, there are a lot of DOH that don't want to help with our local governments. This is what we are basing on to help the DOH and private sectors, our LGU, so that they can survive. Or if we have a quarantine center, I hope it will continue because it's hard. Because I'm in the second district. The Nueva Ecija has four districts. But one district is the hospital that is used for testing. Because until now, in the district, we don't have mask testing or we don't have a testing kit that came from the DOH or equipment. It's missing. So, we all went to District 3 just to survive. And if we don't go to District 3, the people here are in Baguio. So, there are a lot of things that don't follow the DOH. So, how can I trust or how can we be brave to allow the DOH to survive and operate on this?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague. I understand your attitude. Because it's really... Of course, if there is nothing to cure a disease and it's nothing to cure, you don't know how we can fix it. Especially if there are no testing centers. It's a big problem. But our Filipino Indian Chamber of Commerce is supporting a laboratory in Philippine Children's Medical Center. It is added by our congressmen in NCR in order of sacrificing their attendance in May. So, it will be a capacity. And our National Kidney and Transplant Institute will be a recipient of the San Miguel Foundation. And from what I know, I haven't answered yet, but yesterday, there are again pledges. In other words, what is here is a big one in Pampanga. And Pampanga will be enhanced by an additional 3,000 so that will already accommodate 6,000 tests. And we have to be very thankful that we have with us Congressman Joet Garcia of Bataan. Because he has been very bent in putting up the testing center, we are already in the process of finalizing discussion. But if that materializes, then the province of Bataan will have its own testing center with a capacity of 3,000 tests. What it means is that if you test at JB Lingad, it's just to be careful of the locations and with you there. Those who are in San Fernando City, if it's JB Lingad Hospital, they will take it from the city of San Fernando via a partnership with the Pampanga Chamber of Commerce and a private hospital that they are in discussion. It's not finalized yet, but it's already in the final stages. And hopefully, God willing, by May 21, if the meeting will be successful tonight, they will start the installation of the testing center. What it means is that on the day of arrival, we don't go to a week or a month when it's lit. The amendment of the DOH Administrative Order in the establishment of laboratories and online theoretical lectures. In one month's time, let's say, in 15 days, in two weeks' time, we will have an additional 10,000 capacity from the private sector. The next 15 days will again give us a capacity of another 20,000. If you want, I can work with the Chairman of the Committee on Health, Congresswoman Ellen Tan, so that the private sector, as we work with them, will be given regular updates to the Department of Health and to the Health Cluster Committee in Congress to see your progress.
Thank you, Deputy Janet Garin. And thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I hope we all take care of COVID-19.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of Honorable Congresswoman Janet Garin, First District of Ilawilo, and including the interpolation to the Committee on Rules for Its Appropriate Actions.
Is there objection? I hear none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move the gentleman from Third District of Bukidnon, Honorable Manuel Subiri, be recognized to avail the privilege hour.
Representative Manuel Subiri of Third District of Bukidnon is hereby recognized.
Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues and my countrymen. My topic for today is about a program that I've been thinking of for the past 60 days. It is called Adopt a Household Program: Patriotism at its Best. I stand here today, first of all, to honor and thank those who have fought this disease from the very start. Heroes have died, but most heroes still live. Thank you very much to you all for your service in the country. For those of us who have the comforts in life, I beg of you, please adopt a poor household during this time of the pandemic, whether it's six months to one year. I implore the top 2%, even just the 1% of the country's well-to-do families, to hire one head of a poor household just for this period, Mr. Speaker. If the top 2% can help someone in a house, let's say, five people inside the house, multiply it by 2 million times 5. That's already 10 million people being assured of food or being fed, Mr. Speaker. Giving the household head a job with a minimum wage based on location is very doable and not difficult at all. This is patriotism at its finest with millions working as true patriots for their country. My brothers and sisters, your patriotism is spreading. It's important to our country. We know that a lot of you have done it. But there are still things we need to do. There are still things. And there are still hungry people in our country. We have the poor and the new poor to feed. If achieved, I believe this will be the first and this will show the world what true love for God and country is all about. In the Bible, I tell you, whatever you did to one of the least of these brothers and sisters of mine, you did for me. That is from Matthew, Chapter 25, Verse 40. Mr. Speaker, this program will be very close to my heart. I will sit down with those who want to help, starting with the public sector, our government, I will sit down with the DSWD, and of course, the private sector. The NGOs or whoever in the private sector would want to help and start this program with me. I will discuss the mechanics and how to go about this effort. If successful, this will help ease the burden on our government and government spending. My dear friends, my brothers and sisters, in the time of the unknown, in the time of COVID-19, we should stay and stand united. This is a time to stop the fighting and start the building. This is a time to continue the sharing. This is the time to finally do some healing. Lives have been lost. Jobs have been lost. And lives will further be lost if we allow hunger to strive. Let us do our moral obligation of keeping our people's jobs and lives afloat. If we are to heal as one, then we have to work as one. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. God bless our beloved country. I love you, Filipinos. Thank you.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of Honorable Manuel Subiri to the Committee on Rules for Its Appropriate Action.
Is there objection? I hear none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that the gentleman from First District of Quezon, Representative Wilfredo Marc Inverga, be recognized to avail the privilege hour.
Representative Wilfredo Marc Inverga of the First District of Quezon is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My esteemed colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. The COVID-19 pandemic has affected all sectors of society in many different ways. Our aging farmers and fishers are among the most vulnerable persons due to health and economic risks of COVID-19. They are registered to have the highest poverty incidence. The president's timely reports assured all of us, especially the most vulnerable sectors of the much-needed help. The first tranche of the social amelioration assistance is truly responsive to the needs of our people, especially among the low-income households. However, I speak today to appeal the plight of our farmers in the countryside, most specifically those belonging to the below-poverty thresholds. The Department of Agriculture Secretary William Dar said that most of the farmer beneficiaries of the DA Cash Assistance for Rice Farmers or the Financial Subsidy for Rice Farmers, FSRF, were not included in the first tranche of the Social Amelioration Program of the DSWD. The FSRF is an existing program before the ECQ and it covers only rice farmers. It is a one-time cash assistance only to farmers who are included in the identified provinces with low-palay buying price and those stealing 1 hectare and below. Those that are not from the priority provinces were not included. The 3 billion FSRF fund is earmarked under the 2020 General Appropriations Act. It is very clear that not all farmers are recipients or beneficiaries of the FSRF. Thus, those who are not FSRF beneficiaries must receive the regular Social Amelioration Program of the Department of Social Welfare and Development. of the Department of Social Welfare and Development. Allow me to cite as an example the case in the First District of Quezon, which I represent, where 3,676 farmers availed of the 5,000 cash assistance from the DA through the FSRF program. Most of them were denied of the sap of the DSWD, despite the fact that these farmer beneficiaries are marginalized rice farmers in the area. While we are most appreciative of the government's initial and quick release of the financial assistance, we feel that we can do more to make the interventions more responsive and effective and truly felt by the most vulnerable sectors, especially our farmers who have been continuously putting food on our table despite the risks of COVID-19. The crucial role of food and agriculture, of the food and agriculture sector is even more highlighted in the most trying time. We depend so much on our farmers to be able to survive this ECQ. The farmers and food producers' commitment to provide for our needs is shown by the continued food production despite the very difficult situation. I appeal to you, my esteemed colleagues, that we include those who are not FSRF beneficiaries to the beneficiaries of the regular Social Amelioration Program of the DSWD. I plead on behalf of our farmers nationwide, our rice farmers, our vegetable growers, our coconut farmers, our fisher folk, and farm workers. Please include them, as they rightfully should be included in the second release representing the month of May Cash Assistance of the DSWD. Wag po natin silang kalimutan na isama sa mga susunod na mga ayuda hingil sa COVID-19 Cash Assistance Program. Tayo po ay maghawa kamay, magkapit bisig, upang patuloy po natin maipalago ang ating agrikultura at masiguro natin na tayo ay food secure. Hinihingi ko po sa inyong suporta upang ang mga programa ng DA ay maisama sa proposed Economic Stimulus Bill. Suportahan po natin ang hinihingi ng Department of Agriculture na Supplemental Budget or Stimulus Fund para sa ahon lahat pagkain sapat kontra sa COVID-19 o mas kilala sa Alpas sa COVID-19 Program, amounting to 31 billion pesos. The Alpas sa COVID-19 Program contains immediate interventions directed to enhance food security and availability, food accessibility and affordability, and food price stability. To realize all these goals, kasama ko po si Secretary Dar na dumudulog sa inyo na imaisama sa mga susunod na programa ang mga sumusunod. Una po, increasing the National Food Authority's fund for a 30-day buffer stock for the procurement of palay from local farmers. Second, upscaling of kadiwa ni Ani at Kita for production monitoring, provincial services on wheels, trucking of produce from source to metro areas, and kadiwa on wheels in metro areas. Third, Rice Resiliency Project. Following a clustering approach, the major subprojects include: RCF Enhanced to include fertilizers for targeted 947 inbred rice municipalities, expanded inbred rice production, and hybrid rice production in suitable areas. Fourth, Integrated Livestock and Currency Resiliency Project. Fifth, Expanded Small Ruminants and Poultry Project. Sixth, the Corn for Food Project. Seventh, Coconut-Based Diversification Project. Eighth, Fisheries Resiliency Project. Ninth, Urban Agriculture Project. Ten, Revitalized Gulayan Project. Eleven, Expanded Shore Aid Recovery Project. Twelve, Expanded Agriculture Insurance Project. Thirteen, Social Amelioration for Farmers, Fishers, and Farm Workers. Fourteen, Sustained Information, Education, and Communication Project. And lastly, the acquisition of personal protective equipment for our farmers and fisher folks. Ganyan din po ang massive Cash for Work Program for agriculture sector na naglalayo mabigyan ng temporary employment ang mga agricultural farmworkers sa mga proyekto ng DA, kung saan naaangkok. Ang programang ito ay may targeted beneficiaries ng isang milyon sa agri-fishery farm na target beneficiaries. Our support on these measures will provide the timely response to the critical needs of the agriculture and fisheries sector. Samahan niyo po ako na isulong ang mga panukalang ito para masiguro natin na may sapat tayong pagkain sa hinaharap. Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker, at mabuhay po ang ating magsasakang Pilipino.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from Second District of Quezon, Honorable J.J. Suarez, for his interpolation.
Representative J.J. Suarez hereby recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Would my esteemed colleague from my beloved province of Quezon yield to a few clarificatory questions?
Most willingly, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, of course, I'd like to congratulate our dear colleague, the Chairman of the Committee on Agriculture, for such a noble, um, privileged speech, fighting for those who need assistance in this time of crisis. He emphasized on the importance of agriculture. Nabanggit niya na dito sa ipinatutupad na Social Amelioration Program, marami sa ating mga magsasaka, manghingisda, maggugulay, ay hindi nakatanggap. At kanyang ipinapanukala na kung maari tayo dito sa mababang kapulungan ay magkaisa. Na sa susunod na trans ng Social Amelioration Program, ay itong mga bayani natin magsasaka na naghihirap at nagpapakapagod para magdala ng pagkain sa ating mga lamesa ay mapasama. Tama po ba yun, mahal na kinatawan mula sa iyo ng distrito?
Maraming salamat po, tama po yun, Mr. Speaker. At ako'y nagpapasalamat po na nakikita po natin ang kalagahan, lalo tigil ang aking kababayan sa lalawigan ng Quezon, na napakahalaga po ng gampanin ng ating mga farmers po rito. Uh, nabanggit ko lang po, Mr. Speaker, na parang uh, mas lumit pa ang nakuha ng mga farmers na tinuturing po natin mga bayani. At ito nga po ay buwan na nga sa aming lalawigan ay ang pagkilala sa patron ng San Isidro, na kung saan ihinihirang natin ang ating mga mga magsasaka sa ating lalawigan, at siguro po sa ibang mga lalawigan din.
Thank you very much. Mr. Speaker, um, I emphasize on the importance of the privileged speech of our dear colleague because if we remember in the last census conducted by our national government, those who were considered poorest of the poor are our farmers and our fishermen, especially our coconut farmers. And I would like to get clarification from our esteemed colleague kung ilan dito sa mga magsasaka at mahingisda natin at magnineyog ang hindi napasama sa Social Amelioration Program?
Uh, well, Mr. Speaker, sa punto po ngayon, ay hindi pa natin makita yung aktwal na data, ano? Pero sa darating po na merkules ay magkakaroon po ng briefing and update ang Department of Agriculture sa kumitiba ng Agriculture and Food. Uh, siguro po, uh, hihingin ko na rin at nagpapasalamat po ako sa ating mahal na kababayan, Mr. Speaker, na nabanggit po niya ito sapagkat baka po pwedeng mahingiran po natin na opisyal mula sa DILG at DSWD kung paano natin nahati yung Social Amelioration Program, na makita natin kung ano mga propesyon ang marami ang nakakuha at kung ilan din po ang hindi pa nakakatanggap.
Kaya ako po nabanggit yun, uh, Mr. Speaker, is because let's not forget that when everybody was told to stay in their homes, there was a sector of people who continued to toil in their lands. There was a sector of people who continued to fish for us. There was a sector of our population that continued to harvest, to process, to make sure that we've been given enough food during this time that we were locked down. And I emphasize this, Mr. Speaker, because as we enter into the new norm, we need to rethink how we can survive and how we can be self-sufficient, self-reliant. And I think agriculture will be key and vital in our country's, um, rising up uh, from this COVID crisis. So I enjoin my dear colleague from the First District of Quezon and support this resolution, Mr. Speaker, na sa susunod na trans ng Social Amelioration Program ay dapat mapasama ang ating mga magsasaka, mahingisda, manggugulay, mga bayani nating mga kababayan na hindi nakakalimot sa kanya nilang ginagampal ng papel upang tayo lahat ay mabuhay. Maraming, maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you to my dear kababayan.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Wilfredo Marc Inverga, including the interpolation to the Committee on Rules for its Appropriate Action.
Is there objection? I hear none, and the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that the lady from Partilis Bayan Muna, the Honorable Yofemia Canemia Culiamat, be recognized to avail the, avail of the privilege hour.
Representative Yofemia Canemia Culiamat is hereby recognized.
Maraming salamat, Ginong Speaker. Ang Ginong Speaker, mga pakapuakok kinatawan, I speak on a matter of personal and collective privilege kaugnay sa lumalalang paglabag sa karapatan ng mga magsasaka sa panahon ng enhanced community quarantine o mga lockdown sa buong bansa. Mr. Speaker, lubhang nakakabahala ang sunod-sunod na pagkalabag ng karapatang pantao sa mga magsasaka at mamamayan sa kanayunan. Kahapon, na balitaan ang kinatawang ito, ang ginawang paghuli sa anim na magsasaka na miyembro ng samahan ng magsasaka sa Coral de Lopez o Samaculo sa barangay Gulod, Kalaka ng probinsya ng Batangas. Napag-alaman na noong madaling araw ng Mayo 10, sumugod sa komunidad ang mga elemento ng Philippine National Police, Special Weapon and Tactics, Air, Philippine Air Force and Armed Forces of the Philippines, Zero O C Can Brigade, at nag-operate sa barangay kung saan puro sibilyan ang nakatira. Mula ala una ng madaling araw hanggang alas 10 ng umaga, isa-isang nireed ang bahay ng mga leader magsasaka. Pinalabas ang mga nakatira sa bahay at hinuli ang mga kalalakihang leader magsasaka at leader sa komunidad. Ang mga bahay, ni Berhilio Bidal, ang unang pinasok habang natutulog sila, silang mag-anak, pati ang mga anak niyang bata, pinadapa sila at tinutukan ng baril. Pagkatapos ng nireed, sakapanila pinakita ang warrant of arrest, search warrant. Mr. Speaker, kabilang sa mga inaristo, sila Berhilio, sina Berhilio Bidal, barangay sekretary ng barangay Gulod o Coral de Lopez, ang kapit, kapit niya si Marcelo Bidal, si Zulay Holungbayan, Liovino Holungbayan, Dorotiyum Bautista, at si Roylan Tinorio. Pagkatapos ng nag-anap na red, ay may, may nakuha umanong mga granada sa bahay ng mga inaristo. Mr. Speaker, nakapagtataka, nakapagtataka na ang ginamit na search warrant na sinabi, sa sinasabing operasyon ay galing kay Executive Judge Cynthia Marinho Ricablanca ng Regional Trial Court ng Santa Cruz Laguna. Batay sa warrant na may, may ipitzang Mayo City, si Berhilio Bidal daw ay mayroong umanong calibre 45 pistol, calibre 30 carbine, at mga bala. Dinala ang mga inaristong magsasaka sa Camp Bisintilim in Calambalaguna at Saklau ng Police Regional Office 4. Hindi na bago sa Coral de Lopez ang ganitong panggigipit. Ang Samaculo ay matagal ng pinag-iinitan at hinaharas ng mga militar unit na nakadeploy sa Kalaka Batangas, particular ang 6th Infantry Battalion at ang 738 Combat Group ng Philippine Armed Forces. Matagal na rin minilitarisa ang Coral de Lopez simula noong 2015. Araw-araw na hinaharas ng mga sundalo ang mga residente at binabibintangan ang mga kasapi ng Samaculo na mga magsasaka sa araw at mga armado sa gabi. Sinabi rin ng militar ang mga, sinabihan din ng mga militar ang mga leader ng Samaculo na sila ay nasa order of battle o hit list ng militar. Dahil sa militarisasyon na ito, malakas na tinututulan ang mga residente ng barangay Coral de Lopez ang presensya ng militar sa kanilang mga komunidad. Mr. Speaker, ang Samaculo ay isang lihitimong organisasyong magsasaka. Ang mga kasapi nito ay mayroong mga certificate of land ownerships award at benepisyaryo ng programa sa reforma sa lupa ng gobyerno. Matagal na nilang ipinaglalaban ang lupang kanilang sinasaka at pinipigilan ang pangangam kam na mga land grabbers. Kamakailan lang tumulong din ang Samaculo para makuha, makakuha ng ayuda mula sa DOLI, BWAC ang mga manggagawa sa tubuhan sa Kalaka. Mr. Speaker, ang pangyayaring ito sa Kalaka Batangas ay halos katulad, katulad rin sa nangyayari sa Bakulod City noong October 2019, kung saan nireed ang opisina ng mga progresibong grupo at tinaniman ng mga bala, baril, pampasabog ang mga bahay at opisina. Lubhang nakakabahala na ang mga ganitong insidente sa pag-abuso sa karapatan at atake sa mamamayan ay nagaganap habang may enhanced community quarantine saluson. Mr. Speaker, kapwa ako kinatawan, marami pang insidente ng pagpaslang at pagaristo sa mga magsasaka ang naitala ng tanggol magsasaka habang nakaisikyo at kumakaharap tayo sa COVID-19 pandemic. Kabilang dito, kabilang dito ang mga nangyaring pagpaslang kinanora apiki sa Agusan del Norte noong March 31, kay Marlon Madlos ng Bohol noong March 17, at kay John Parottilim ng Ilocos, ng Iloilo noong April 18. Mayroon ding nag-anap na ilegal na pagaristo sa mga magsasaka sa Samar at Kison at ibapang probinsya. Nakakabahala na ang sitwasyon ng pandemya at lockdown ay sinamantala para gipitin ang mga lihitimong organisasyon ng mga magsasaka at mga leader nito. Mr. Speaker, nanawagan ako sa Committee ng ating kapulungan at sa Commission on Human Rights na maagap na imbestigahan ang mga pangyayaring ito sa mga komunidad ng magsasaka. Ginong Speaker, sinabi natin na kailangan tayong magkaisa sa panahon ng pandemya upang, uh, magkaisa tayong, um, mailigtas natin ang ating, uh, mamamayan. Ngunit sa mga, sa mga pangyayaring ito, eh, nakikita natin na, uh, malilito tayo kung saan tayo banda magkaisa. Ito lamang po, maraming salamat, at magandang hapon sa ating lahat.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech- Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Eupemia Capemia Culiamat to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there objection? I hear none, then the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, unfortunately, we ran out of time. I would like to beg the indulgence of our colleagues who wish to avail of the privileged speech. Based on our protocol, we are not allowed to stay more than two hours in this, on this session hall, and we have a prevailing curfew because of the ECQ. Let me assure, however, our colleagues, Mr. Speaker, that tomorrow, those who have listed in the, those who have listed and they intend to avail of the privilege are will be called tomorrow, and they will be given priority as well. So right now, I beg the indulgence of our colleagues, but I will move to suspend the privilege hour, Mr. Speaker. So move.
Is there an objection? I hear none, then the motion.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up additional reference of business, and I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measures on first reading as well as resolutions and communications. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The Secretary General is hereby directed for the additional reference of business.
Additional reference of business, resolutions. House Resolution Number 847. Resolution directing the Committee on Health to conduct an inquiry in aid of legislation into the hiring and management of employees, the disbursement of funds, and the construction of facilities of the Talavera General Hospital. Representative Swansing Estrelita.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 848. Resolution urging the Committee on Labor and Employment to conduct inquiry in aid of legislation on the repercussions to workers in government of memorandum circular number 580 released by the DBM. Representative Kabatbat.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 849. Resolution to pay homage to the fallen soldiers who perished while aiding families affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. Representatives Lim Kai Chong, Paduano Arroyo, Benitez, Cueva, Ferjuliet, and Sagarbaria.
Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee.
Resolution Number 850. Resolution urging the House of Representatives to the Committee on Health and the Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee to conduct an inquiry in aid of legislation on the high incidence of infection and deaths due to COVID-19 among the frontline health workers and recommend urgent measures to protect and support the health workers. Representatives Gaite, Zarate, Culiamat, Castafrance, Brazos, and Elago.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution Number 851. Resolution granting Tourism Industry Emergency Stimulus Subsidies Program to address economic impact due to COVID-19 pandemic affecting more than 400 tourism economic zones nationwide. Representative Halosos.
Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee.
House Resolution Number 852. A resolution urging the Defeat COVID-19 Committee to conduct an inquiry in aid of legislation on the impact of coronavirus disease 2019 pandemic on Philippine agriculture to determine the status of food security in the country post implementation of community quarantine.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution Number 853. Resolution directing the Committee on Legislative Franchise to inquire in aid of legislation on the probable violations of ABS-CBN Corporation of its legislative franchise under Republic Act Number 7966. Representatives Duterte, Tolentino, and Yap Eric.
Committee on Rules.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend the session.
Is there objection? I hear none. Motion approved. Sessions resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Majority, I, Mr. Speaker, in accordance with the rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move that we refer House Resolution Number 846 to the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability and House Resolution Number 853 to the Committee on Legislative Franchise. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there objection? I hear none, then the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move the change of referral of House Resolution Number 808 urging the Department of Social Welfare and Development to relax the requirements and assessment procedure for the distribution of the emergency subsidy program from the Committee on Social Service to the Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there objection? I hear none, then the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, in view of the creation of the Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee, I move that the composition of the subclusters be corrected as follows. First, in under the new normal, the Subcommittee headed by Deputy Speaker Lauren Legarda. Number one, Committee on Micro, Small, and Medium Enterprises Development. Number two, Committee on Disaster Management. Three, Committee on Higher Education, Higher and Technical Education. Four, Committee on Trade and Industry. Fifth, Committee on Transportation. Sixth, Committee on Basic Education. Seven, Committee on Labor and Employment. Eight, Committee on Governmentary Organization. Nine, Committee on Public Information. Ten, Committee on Local Government. Eleven, Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation. Twelve, Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability. Thirteen, Committee on Revision of Laws. Fourteen, Committee on Information and Communication Technology. Fifteen, Committee on Interparliamentary Relations and Diplomacy. Sixteen, Committee on Foreign Affairs. And Seventeen, Committee on Appropriations. Under the Health and COVID-19 Response Subcommittee headed by Co-Chairpersons Honorable Helen Tan and Honorable Janet Karin. Number one, Committee on Health. And number two, Committee on Science and Technology. Third, Committee on Social, Subcommittee on Social Amelioration headed by Co-Chairpersons Honorable Luis Raymond Villaferte and Lucy Torres Gomez. First is the Committee on Agrarian Reform. Second, Committee on Agriculture and Food. Third, Committee on Agriculture and Fisheries Resources. Fourth, Committee on Cooperatives Development. Fifth, Committee on Natural Resources. Sixth, Committee on Rural Development. Seventh, Committee on Veteran Affairs and Welfare. Eight, Committee on Overseas Workers and Affairs. Ninth, Committee on Eleven, Committee on Poverty alleviation. Tenth, Committee on Social Services. Eleventh, Committee on Welfare of Children. Twelve, Committee on Women and Gender Equality. Thirteen, Committee on Youth and Sports Development. Fourteenth, Committee on People's Participation. Fifteen, Special Committee on Food Security. Sixteen, Special Committee on Land Use. Seventeen, Special Committee on Persons with Disability. And Eighteen, Special Committee on Senior Citizen. Under the Cluster of the Economic Stimulus Response Package headed by Co-Chairpersons Honorable Joyce Alceda, Honorable Sharon Garin, and Honorable Stela Kimbo, first will be the Committee on Economic Affairs, Committee on Public Works and Highways. Third, Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization. Fourth, Committee on Sustainable Development Goals. Fifth, Committee on Metropolitan Development. Sixth, Committee on Games and Amusement. Seven, Committee on Ways and Means. Eight, Special Committee on Climate Change. Nine, Committee on Visayas Development. Ten, Committee on Tourism. Eleven, Committee on Energy. Twelve, Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries. Thirteen, Special Committee on Flagship Programs and Projects. Fourteen, Special Committee on Globalization WTO. Fifteen, Special Committee on Southern Tekalag Development. Sixteen, Special Committee on Vehicle Recovery and Economic, and Economic Committee. Seventeen, Special Committee on North Luzon Growth Quadrangle. Eighteen, Special Committee on Basis Conversion. Nineteen, Special Committee on Reforestation. Twenty, Special Committee on East Asian Growth Area. And lastly, on the Cluster of the Peace and Order Subcommittee headed by Co-Chairpersons Honorable Roold Tubas, Roold Bubitupas, and Honorable Bong Bravo. First will be the Committee on Accounts. Second, Committee on National Defense and Security. Third, Committee on Public Order and Safety. Fourth, Committee on Ecology. Fifth, Committee on Housing and Urban Development. Sixth, Committee on Population and Family Relations. Seventh, Committee on, Committee on Constitutional Amendments. Eighth, Committee on Ethics and Privileges. Ninth, Committee on Justice. Tenth, Committee on Legislative Franchise. Eleven, Committee on Public Accounts. Twelve, Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms. Thirteenth, Committee on Dangerous Drugs. Fourteenth, Committee on Human Rights. Fifteen, Committee on Mindanao Affairs. Sixteen, Committee on Muslim Affairs. Seventeen, Committee on Indigenous Cultural Communities and Indigenous Peoples. Eighteen, Special Committee on Peace, Reconciliation, and Unity. Nineteenth, Special Committee on Strategic Intelligence. And Twenty, Special Committee on West Philippine Sea. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there objection? I hear none, then the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session until 3 o'clock in the afternoon of May 12, tomorrow, Tuesday. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there objection? I hear none, then the motion is approved.
Cluster.
Cluster.
Yeah.